Good afternoon. It is a little after 4:00 p.m. on August 28, 2023, and I'm going to call the work session of the Madison City Council to order. We have, I think, Teddy Powell on the way, and Mayor Finley is at a meeting in Huntsville, and we'll be here as soon as we can. We're going to go ahead and change the order of the agenda and move item number two up to the front. And I'd like to ask Mary Beth to come forward and talk about Plan Three of the redistricting map.
...up on the screen, and we also have a small version in front of you, but this was emailed out to you, and it's also been on the city's website for over a week. So as you recall from your last public meeting with the consultant, you provided input, the public provided some input, and so based upon those comments, the consultant has prepared this Plan Three, which meets statutory requirements in terms of one person, one vote. One of the comments that was provided was to make sure that those districts that we anticipate to have more growth in the future, that those be in the negative right now to anticipate that growth, and so they've been able to achieve that with District Three, Four, One, and Two. And they've been able to basically address almost all of the comments. There are some that couldn't work, and as you recall at your last meeting, we did an in-real-time adjustment, and you could see if they took one area out, you know, it has this domino effect in what occurred. Since the plan has been on the website and distributed, I have not received any comments from the public about it, and happy to answer any questions or go into more detail if you would like.
Would we be able to get one of those hard copies just for our future reference that has all the data in it like we've gotten before?
Sure, so you have one that's a larger scale.
Yeah, yeah. Is there any in that bound book that we had? Do you think?
Ah, okay. So the, I could ask the consultant to put that together. He didn't put something like that together just because there wasn't a presentation, but I could certainly ask him for that. And to that point, your next scheduled meeting on this is for the first meeting in October, October 9th, which is when we are anticipating having the public hearing, and we could certainly have those books in preparation for the public hearing. What are the things we want to accomplish with this meeting tonight is to see if you have any additional comments. If not, this is the plan that we would go forward with for the public hearing. The consultant's next step is to prepare the legal descriptions. That would be part of the ordinance that would get adopted, and so we would have them do that prior to the public hearing ideally. And so tonight, again, we want to take any comments that you may have and decide if we're moving forward or if we need to look at a plan for.
Okay, let's open this up for council comments, observations about Plan Three and the adjustments that were made.
Are you going in order?
Any order.
I'm good. I've studied it, and I think it's a great compromise. Thank you so much for getting Park Meadow all together. That was huge for that community.
Any other observations, yea, nay, thumbs up, thumbs down?
No, I think it looks really good.
Did you put your mic down?
No, I think it all worked out very well. I appreciate all the numbers and the changes. I think it's good.
Mary Beth, one thing I noticed was that in our work session where Mara had pointed out, Park Meadow was split, so we, now this map puts it together, and each time we made an adjustment or suggested adjustment, it looks like it's not possible to keep every neighborhood together. They tried as much as they could, but there's, no matter which map you pick, there's going to be some neighborhood that's split in some way.
That is true, and they did try several iterations to try and keep subdivisions whole, and at the last meeting, there were several identified, whether they were in District Seven or wherever, or District One. I think the District Seven one is still split a little bit because, again, it is a domino effect, and trying to keep those districts where we're going to have a lot of growth on the low end is a more important goal, I guess I will say, or at least that's what it seemed, than keeping a neighborhood in one district. And I would add, the consultant indicated that it's very common that you have subdivisions that are split. We have subdivisions that are split now, or that you may have one side of a street in one district and another side of the street in the other.
Okay, all right. Any other comments, observations from council?
Yes, I want to thank you, first of all, for listening to our comments and taking those into account and massaging map number two to come up with this. I think this is the best plan so far. I wish there was a way to make District Two a little smaller because of all the white, which is unincorporated area, but I also understand that that is not possible at this time because of the numbers and the fact that from the highest number, or highest population district to the lowest population district, you can only have a 10% difference total. And so I appreciate y'all working with us and listening to us and being very patient.
Thank you. Also, we still have the growth policy in place, and that growth policy puts a damper, I guess I'll say, on annexation. So it's not a foregone conclusion that all of that area that's shown in white would be annexed in the next 10 years. Possible, but, you know, that growth policy would need to change quite a bit in order for that to occur.
So if I'm hearing, we have consensus that map three is the one we're going to move forward on public hearing and what we will be publishing and getting legal descriptions.
Yes, ma'am.
Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, Mary Beth. Thank you to consultants for their work. Appreciate that feedback. And next, and we've, just so you know, we've taken the agenda out of order, and we are now moving to item number three, which is council special projects. We have some money left over in our special projects fund, and we've had a couple of items submitted to us with some cost estimates, and the first was an animal shelter, and I don't know, Steve, if you or who would like to present, or Chief Gandy, I don't know if he's, nope. Each of council received an email in terms of the, but I think you were also going to give us some information about vetting charges you were going to check on.
I was checking on that. I've not got a final answer yet, but we are working on that part. So as far as the canines, with the growth behind here, there's been a couple of potential issues, and I think the police department's been looking for a safer place to keep our canines for a long time, and so the plan now is to move them over to the Celtic Drive location. That's going to be up to $14,000 to make that move, and it can be done in just a matter of two or three weeks.
What will it look like, the facility there? I mean, is it like six-foot chain link fence?
Kind of similar to what we have here, I believe. We're going to move the structures over there.
Okay.
We'll just build a fence where they can run around, and then the structure and...
Okay, so they would be protected then from the rain, like it has a cover and lightning? I mean, they're not just going to be in a...
Umbrellas. We'll give them some umbrellas they can carry around.
Well, I just hate the thought of being surrounded by chain link fence with light...
I agree.
We've had some bad storms.
You'll be covered.
So basically, what it'll kind of look like, there's a lean-to structure, the long lean-to structure on the south end of that Celtic Drive property. What we're going to do is take part of that underneath that structure there, make individual pads for the individual dogs, individual fencing with covers, so we'll have an additional cover over the top. We're running, pullet works are going to run over water from us from the opposite side of the parking lot over, and then we've got an electrician contracted to come in and put up lighting and some plugs, so if we need to put in fans or anything like that for them, we can keep them comfortable under there as well. So they will be out from under the weather.
Okay.
Eight-foot privacy fencing all the way around, with a four-foot privacy fencing along the back edge of that corrugated metal on the backside of that lean-to, because it's probably about two foot, two and a half foot off the ground, they're stowed, but we're going to put a chain link there just to keep everything out.
Very good.
So we'll have those facilities there, and those will be for our three police canine dogs. Get those two structures that are over there that are flooded, that's about every time it's rained.
Right.
The proximity now with the setback in the easement from the subdivision with the little road that's supposed, the maintenance road that's supposed to run down through there, we're, now we're right over into where those buildings are anyway. So this will get them out from here, get them to a more secure location, until hopefully we can get into the long-term plan of building a actual facility down there for animal control, to have an indoor climate-controlled space that they need, and then attach onto that building a place for our canines to be inside as well.
Perfect. You know, you're speaking my music when you, or singing my music when you say that, because I'm concerned about the shelter out there as well, same issue with flooding and conditions. So it sounds like a right move in the right direction.
So council, you've received a copy of a resolution that we will walk on this evening if everyone is in agreement that we need to move the canine unit and house them on Celtic Drive due to the construction that's happening behind City Hall. They think they can have that constructed by the end of September, which meets our requirements in terms of using our special town, our project money. Does anyone have any questions or anything about that? And then, Steve, if it turns out that the vet services, how would that be paid for in terms of the vet services for the dogs that they're not receiving right now?
If we work that out, I think there's probably some money in the police department knows it right now, because it's not going to be a whole lot. We've got a couple of dogs now. We got two weeks before things get back to normal, so it's a very minimal cost, and we can find that money in the police budget.
Okay.
And I'm sorry, what were you speaking to with the vet services? Is that...
With the animal control, currently, they're not able to get the vet serviced at the current vet that they were using because of the...
Some type of vet, of flu.
Carbo.
That vet can't see them, so we've got to find another vet to see the dogs when they are turned into animal control.
Yes.
We thought about trying to get that worked out, but we couldn't get it worked out for tonight's agenda.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Steve. And then the second item that we have is a couple of picnic tables that I sent you a picture of. We have an estimate from Corey that he thinks can be shipped here by the end of September if we can get it on tonight's agenda. That's also going to be a walk-on item of about $3,000, and that's for Kids Kingdom. Are there any questions about that? Are you okay with walking that item on this evening? Okay, so we've got a head nod there. All right, then we're going to move back to the top item, and that's Toyota Field Improvements. And so, Mary Beth, you're here on again.
Did you want to also mention the resolution, the other resolution of the recording or...
Oh, oh, yes. We are live streaming this, and so we will walk on a resolution to archive the recording of this particular work session, so I'll add that to my line item.
Thank you.
Okay, go ahead, Mary Beth.
Do you recall that in January of this year, we had a work session about Toyota Field and the fact that Major League Baseball had adopted standards that apply to all minor league facilities, and that audits were being conducted, and based upon the audit findings, certain improvements may or may not need to be done to each of the 120 minor league facilities. And in January, we reviewed with you this handout, which I didn't recopy for you all, that identified what we anticipated to be done based upon a preliminary audit, looking to spend about $150,000 for, I'll say, the initial phase of improvements, and then ultimately having to build a new visitor clubhouse, which at the time we were, we had been given an estimate of about $2.5 million. In January, council authorized the expenditure of up to $300,000 from the venue maintenance fund to cover that first phase of improvements that allowed us to hire an architect and get certain improvements done, and you've had some bills coming before you. The good news is that that $150,000 estimate was about spot-on, because we're anticipating now, and you've got a handout in front of you, about $147,000 for Phases One and Phase Two. We're spending on slightly different things based upon a formal audit that we actually got from MLB in July, but overall, our estimate of about $150,000 out of the venue maintenance fund is accurate, and you've actually got several items on your agenda this evening on your regular council agenda, about $14,000 worth of improvements. The not-so-good news, and I'm going to come back to what we've already done, but just to get to the punchline, the not-so-good news is the recent cost for a new clubhouse only is about $6 million. So I'm going to come back to that as well. But in terms of the handout that you have in front of you, we've broken out the phases of improvements. Phase One is what we have to complete basically by the end of October, and if sooner is better. You can see we've had some architectural costs. We've completed a number of items, and those are identified for you in that top grouping. You'll note that Ballcore has completed a number of these things, and so the costs that we're showing are not, doesn't include Ballcore's costs, so they've picked up some of those improvements themselves. So we've spent about $55,000 thus far, and we've got about another almost $15,000 that's pending. That will bring us into compliance, or we're anticipating bringing, being in compliance for this current ball season, which is almost over. And I can go into any of the details you'd like, but we've had to create a temporary visitor commissary, which we did by converting the mascot room in the lower part of the building into a visitor commissary. We had to upgrade our existing home club commissary. We've had to improve the batting tunnel, and this is an important improvement. We were faced with the possibility of having to build an entire new batting tunnel. The batting tunnels are, was around the concourse, and MLB has adopted a minimum standard for the height of the nets, so from the floor up to the nets of 12 feet, and they also wanted the batting cages to be enclosed. And so we were able to meet that 12 feet, just barely, but we met it. Building Department has been super helpful. They raised all the lights in the facility. So those are costs that, you know, aren't on here, that we were able to absorb to try and economize, but the building staff raised the lights, and we, you know, we did hire people to do the structural engineering to raise the cables, but we were able to meet that 12 feet, and that was really significant. And MLB has met us, we'd say halfway on this particular item, because they're allowing a mesh curtain to be installed, so if there's strong winds, there's rain, the mesh curtains can be pulled across and enclose the batting area. We also have to install a, effectively like a swamp cooler to make sure that there's fresh air in there if the mesh curtains are pulled over, and you'll see on your council agenda tonight both the mesh curtain purchase and the swamp cooler. Ballcore is going to do all of the installation of the mesh curtains, so again, we're not going to be picking up an installation cost. So they've been a great partner with us in that regard, where they can do improvements, they're doing them, as well as city staff trying to do some of the improvements to keep our costs down. So the batting tunnel, if we had had to have built a new batting tunnel building because we couldn't have met the height, you know, that would have cost us at least $5 million, probably more, so that was really significant. So anyway, we've created, we've done a number of improvements. We've got the batting tunnel enclosure to complete, which we should be able to do once we get the mesh curtains. We have to create a lockable storage for Major League Baseball, so we've got an area downstairs where there's storage. We're going to purchase some chain link fence and enclose that off, and that will meet MLB's requirement. For Phase Two, which has to be done before next season starts, we are, and you'll see that Phase Two, we're estimating that's about $50,000, and again, that's part of the 150. There's a pony wall that's between the weight room and the home clubhouse training room. We've got to relocate that pony wall about three feet over, because our weight room is slightly undersized, but we have enough room in our training room that we can do that. We also have to replace, there's these drain gates, grates all around the perimeter of the field, and MLB has now a new standard for drain grates, and so we have to replace all of the drain grates. And then the last item is to, I'll say, improve the padding, so MLB's got some new padding requirements. If you're out on the field, you'll see there's a concrete lip that goes around the field, so that's all got to be padded, and so this is one of the items where Ballcore is going to work with a potential sponsor company. So the cost that we're estimating for this is less because we're anticipating some type of a partnership opportunity there. So that represents Phases One and Phase Two, gets us to about $150,000. And then we get to Phase Three, which is the new clubhouse. If you recall, back in January, you had this exhibit, and we showed the potentiality of a clubhouse either out in the plaza or on the concourse, right between the two buildings. After spending quite a bit of time on it, we're now looking at the plaza and the outfield. MLB has the requirement that the players be able to get out onto the field. Ballcore would like the building to be somewhat, I'll say, half-subterranean. It's not that much more of a cost, and what that does is it gives an opportunity in the future, if the building were ever to be added on to, it makes the most sense from an architectural standpoint. That $6 million also represents...
Ladies, could you please be quiet? Thank you.
The $6 million also represents enhanced foundations for the building. So again, if we were to decide to ever add on to the top of that building, the building's foundations would be already sized. It's not that much additional cost compared to the total $6 million price tag, but that would be thinking forward, right? We've had a number of conversations with Ballcore about adding on to the clubhouse, basically looking at adding revenue-producing elements. In their optimal situation, they were, there would be probably three floors above that clubhouse, so looking at a four-story structure. They've retained an architect to look at that. They're looking at revenue opportunities associated with that, and we've been talking with them about what that could look like. At this point, we don't have any type of agreement or proposal to present to you beyond talking about the $6 million single-level clubhouse.
I'm sorry, Mary Beth, so is the three floors, is that going all the way around the concourse or just above the visitor's clubhouse?
It would just be above the visitor clubhouse.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. So one of the things, I guess, that we're hoping to maybe get a head nod from you on this evening, after answering any questions that you might have, is to be able to move forward in a more formalized fashion with the clubhouse. The clubhouse has to be completed by the start of the 2025 season, and we're up against the clock in that, you know, ideally, we would have had, you know, the South to Bid already, and if we're just doing a single clubhouse, it's maybe doable that we can get it all done before the season starts, but we don't have a lot of time to waste. We need to, you know, retain an architect, a construction manager, go into formalized drawings and so forth. We're still going to keep the conversations going with Ballcore to see if this might look like something else, and it makes sense to present something else to you. So I'm going to stop for now and see if I can answer any questions.
Hey, council, I'm opening it up.
I have one question, really kind of out of curiosity. What are other teams in the Southern League doing? Like, what's, I mean, and I know it's not necessarily what other people are doing or what we're doing, but like, what's Montgomery doing? They, I think they have a pretty old stadium. I can't imagine what their costs would be. I'm just curious as to what's happening with the Montgomery City Council and the Birmingham City Council. Mississippi's another one, Biloxi, I think their stadium's kind of older.
So we did pose that question to Ballcore, because they're the ones who are in meetings with all these teams, and I do have some information about other clubs. I don't have it about other Alabama clubs. It's basically what's been published. I can share with you that Arkansas, for example, is looking at an additional $7 million in improvements. Asheville, North Carolina, $20 million. Durham, North Carolina, $10 million. Spokane, Washington, $22 million. Wisconsin, $10 million. Lehigh Valley, 9.5. It, there's a range. What's unclear for some of these improvements is, you know, what are the minimum necessary versus maybe some additional things that they've negotiated with the team owners. MLB has provided the following, that of the total of 120 clubs, 85 clubs are currently projected to be in compliance by 2024. 11 clubs have a firm plan in place for compliance in 2025, which is the ultimate. 14 clubs are going to be opening new ballpark, and 10 clubs haven't produced a sufficient plan to know if they're going to comply or not. Chattanooga's building a new club, Kinston, Richmond, Tennessee. So it kind of runs the gamut, and the funding for all of this is varied. You know, some places are getting assistance from the state, some places are getting assistance from a county or a tourism authority. You know, in some cases, the city is footing the entire bill or a portion of the bill. You know, in some cases, the city is footing the entire bill or a portion of the bill. In some cases, the team is assisting. But, you know, as you recall, we had a pretty unprecedented lease agreement with Ballcore. So one of the teams that is assisting with their improvements, their lease is a dollar a year. Another one is like $25,000 a year. So it's really hard to do an apples-to-apples comparison of, you know, what's the minimum cost they have to do? What's the team already giving the, you know, whoever owns the facility? So it's a little bit difficult. But I can certainly look at the other Alabama teams, but that information wasn't readily available.
I would be particularly interested in the division, which would be necessary. And then my other question was, can we get support from the Angels organization? As far as I know, they haven't given us any particular support. Would they be somebody that we could reach out to as the parent organization?
I am not aware of any parent teams doing that, but I can certainly make an inquiry to see if that's changed.
Coming from a PTA perspective, and I'm just used to going, you know, can you help us out? It never hurts to ask. All they can do is say no.
I think the other good news is that, you know, for the $6 million facility and talking with Roger, that we have the funds for that. So this isn't something that would impact the general fund. You know, we've been squirreling money away in the venue maintenance fund. And Roger can provide you more specifics. But it isn't something that we're, you know, we don't love that we have to do this for a brand-new facility. It's beyond frustrating. But we can afford to do the $6 million. And the reality is, we've, you know, we've made increased MLB through Ballcore. We've asked the question seven different, seven different ways. And there is no moving from this. And so we, and if we continue to think that we're going to change MLB's mind, we're just going to come closer and closer to not being able to meet that September or that 2025 date, which we don't want to do.
Mary Beth, for those of people who might not know or have forgotten, can you remind us what the lease amount is that the trash can is paid?
Well, it's a minimum of $1 million. And then there is revenue sharing beyond that.
Okay, thank you. That's per year?
That's per year. Compare, again, compared to a dollar, I was shocked at some of the teams paying $25,000 a year.
Yes, can y'all, it's really tough to listen to someone else and y'all waving your hands and all that stuff. If you could, it'd help me out a lot. I'm all over the place, so if you can just let me focus on personally, Anne, I appreciate it. Thank you. So does that also include the, I guess, the, I think it's $300,000 a year for the maintenance? It's the million and there's an additional?
Well, no. The total amount of money that we get from Ballcore goes towards the bond and then should be going towards venue maintenance. We pull money, some of the money comes out of debt service, I believe, for the venue maintenance.
So a lot of this was paid out of that portion of goods?
So the $150,000 is coming out of the venue maintenance fund, which, if you recall from the lease agreement, we set aside at least the $300,000 a year towards capital expenditures. You know, you might have an HVAC unit go out and so forth. So we certainly weren't anticipating this type of capital expenditure. But we've got that money set aside for that.
Any other questions from Mayor Beth?
I do have a question concerning the venue lease management agreement. And it kind of goes to where we're bringing that money in. So I would just like to see, I've never seen an accounting on how much the venue revenue has been. It says it is to include payments to the city of the parking fee revenues, the base license fees, the city events, naming rights, performance license fees, echo, whatever, sales tax proceeds, Ballcore non-baseball events. And then there's the revenue protection period where if we don't meet the $1.4 million, then we're not responsible for all these payments towards the maintenance. So I've just never seen a full accounting of what has come in to show that we are, that they are covering that money. So is that possible to get that?
Yeah, I think that when we get the audits, because there's been several audits. And every year when the accountants come and they present the audit, they do go over that information. But what we can do is pull together the previous presentations that have been given to council to show that information.
Yeah, to show that full number.
You might not have been at a meeting or something when that was reviewed. I don't know, but I know that the audits go through all of that.
They do, but I've never seen the number in the last thing. If I did stuff, it was just like all this transfer money in and stuff. So it's like, it would just be really good to see exactly how much money is coming in. And so we can say, yeah, this is offset by the revenue that is coming in and to prove that. And I think that would be very helpful.
Okay.
Thank you.
John, you have a question?
I do, but Greg, where you going?
Okay.
Okay. So the $6 million, I mean, that's an estimate. How confident are we in that? And what's driving that? Because I mean, I've been in a lot of clubhouses. That's a pretty dang expensive clubhouse.
Yeah.
I know you said you want, what I understand you saying was that's ground level. They have direct access out to the field. I assume through the bullpen and whatever, but...
Kind of.
In that vicinity, but...
Yeah, so we've had...
Is that like excavation?
Right, the excavation, yeah, I was concerned about the excavation. And so I've asked the various people who've done cost estimating, you know, how much would that add, right? Rather than just building it right on the plaza. It's several hundred thousand dollars, which in the scheme of things isn't a lot if we get better utility and functionality out of the building. We've had three different entities do a cost estimation for us. That first one was the 2.5 back of the envelope back in January. Since then, we've had two firms, I should say Ballcore, because Ballcore has paid for this, we have not. We've had two firms look at it. And the costs range anywhere from about five to eight. We're on the $6 million side just because we know some of the costs are a little bit conservative. And the lower end, we're assured is just a really spot-on number and so forth. So we're up at six, you know, it could be at 6.5. In terms of our confidence level at this time, you know, we don't have design drawings, right? We're not even at schematic design. So it's possible it could go up slightly. It's possible it could go down.
But you're basing these off of estimates that you've...
We have a floor plan that meets MLB requirements. Doesn't have a lot of fluff in it. If we're building just the one building, you know, if we can add a little bit of storage room or something, we want to, just in case MLB decides they need more storage or something. But, so it is based upon a floor plan. Architects have spent quite a bit of time trying to zero in on it. We've tried to capture construction management costs, soft costs, you know, furniture, all of those types of things. We don't have to build a new weight room. That's what we have in our existing clubhouse. So the clubhouse consists of a locker room, restrooms, a commissary, offices for the, you know, the coaches and whatnot. It's fairly straightforward, but, and then there would be an elevator. You need that for ADA to get up to the main plaza level. And then also, if we were to ever build on top, you recall, well, right out in the field now, there's that tall tower, right? So that elevator shaft was built in anticipation of there being a building there, right? Remember, it was called Club 325, I believe, at the time. But, so we want to be thinking forward, right? And so there'll be some costs, again, enhanced foundations and things like that so that we could do that if the opportunity arose and it made sense. So the cost is based on something. It's just not on a schematic design drawing. So, yeah.
Thank you.
Great, you have questions?
I just wanted to touch that on those other stories, if they've generated enough revenue to pay for the building, and we don't have to get in our general fund with it, I think it's something worth looking at, that we're not just dead in the water at $6 million. That if we can do additional building that would sell more tickets, that would pay for ourselves, I'd like to explore some of those avenues. I think we do that for sure. I mean, as far as foundation, talking about a little bit more concrete and some steel, possibly, that's about it.
Right.
And, you know, so if you've overbuilt, maybe you spent $100,000 more, and you never do nothing. But if you've underbuilt, you can't, you can't go from there. So I'd be certainly interested in that.
Maybe we could get sponsors for that visitors' clubhouse and the different levels as well. And you sure we can reach out to the Angels organization too, just to see or not?
Sure, we'll definitely make that inquiry. I can tell you, we are shaking every tree possible trying to figure this out.
I'll reach out to them more, more often, too.
Yeah. So you're wanting a head nod from the council or what?
Well, you know, in order, this will be a city facility on city land. We have to put this project out to bid. In order to do that, we've got to retain an architect to prepare drawings. We typically, for something like this, would also have a construction management service and to help us with value engineering and so forth. So before we proceed with that, I'd like to find out if we're okay with proceeding with that. Because, you know, we need to get proposals and get those contracts in place so that drawings could be prepared and we could put it out to bid. If, you know, to Greg's point, if there's something that's worked out on the revenue side for stories above the clubhouse, you know, we could certainly look for an opportunity to make that all work at the same time. But we're a little concerned if we continue to delay much longer about moving forward with the facility that we know we have to build and meeting that timeline.
Well, I think it would be very short-sighted if we did not make at least the first, if we're doing the first level, we need to make it expandable, either up or out somehow because we know more changes are going to come at some point.
I'm in denial about that, but yes, I understand.
When you got through the bid, are you going to do it two bids? You know, one with a larger foundation, one with a regular foundation? Or can we just do one with a larger foundation?
I think I would recommend that, and we'll talk about it as a team. And obviously Gerald, our new building, facilities director, will be very involved with this. But I think that we'd recommend just doing the full foundation, if you will.
If you not bid it with just the foundation and then with the additional floors as like an alternate that if that gets started?
Oh, you mean for the full, for a full build? Um, we can do that. If council would like us to do that, we can do that. So the, you know, Ballcore contracted, as I mentioned, with an architect and identified to that architect what they would like the program to be, what they would like those four stories to consist of. So we have that preliminary information. So certainly drawings could be developed for a full build, if you will. And then, you know, there'd be some additional cost if we wanted to prepare all of those drawings. And then if we decide not to go forward with it and just do, say, the ground level, we would at least, I guess, have drawings that could be relied on in the future if it were ever built in the future. So you would have opportunities. We could put it out to bid for just the ground level. And then an alternate could be ground level plus, you know, I keep touching this, with whatever. So that's an option. But there will be an additional cost involved to, you know, have an architect design the entire building. But if you want to do that, that's fine. That's just a decision point.
I think what I would ask is, can we get a hard quote on this is what it takes to meet the minimum? And as an option, what I would call a ROM, real for a magnitude for a plus, instead of designing drawings for something that we don't have a business case for yet? If we get a business case that says, hey, we could do that, then we could go create the engineering necessary to take that ROM and make a firm quote. So it would be kind of halfway between doing a firm quote on all of it and a firm quote on just the base. It would just say, let's do a firm quote on the base. Let's do a ROM of what this will cost up here while we go work if there is a business case that makes sense. And then at that point, we would know, hey, okay, let's go do that and then add the drawings to that.
I don't, I mean, I don't think it hurts to go ahead and get the quote. I mean, the only thing you're out are the drawings. But the thing you could possibly say is a mobilization fee. I mean, for those, for them to bring all that equipment back out. You know, I mean, there's, it's a, it's not, it can't be too...
Get it all at once. You're going to be better off, in my opinion. And if you have one person building the bottom structure, then you come back and say, now we're going to bid this. Nobody else is going to bid it. And then this guy's going to be like, oh, I got him. I think your, I think your top fours are going to go a whole lot up and if somebody's bidding the whole entire, all the entire structure.
And I totally agree with you because I know, you know, you work with engineers as much as I do and you are one. Have you ever seen two of them agree on the same thing? Yeah, they just, they don't. I mean, you know, or contractors instance, you know. If you, if I go out and, you know, I take the sheet rock out of a house, then the next guy behind me, I took the sheet rock out improperly. I mean, it just, it's, and then that costs more, so...
Well, what I would suggest is that if you were wanting to go forward, we could have this kind of conversation with construction manager, with the architect. You know, Ballcore has an estimated cost for the full structure. And so we have a sense of what that, what that would be from two different firms. And at this point, we don't think there is that business case, right, that the city would support that. And so that's why I'm talking to you about $6 million structure. But if council wants to go forward with us retaining the architect and construction manager and working through that while the city maybe continues to talk with Ballcore, you know, we'll have a no-go-go, you know, go-no-go point, right? Where we can say, all right, we're just going to go forward with this. Or we want to go out to bid for the entire thing. You know, we bid it out for six and then the layer cake above. We don't have to make that decision today.
So what do you think those additional costs are just to get some of those questions answered? You know, the architects and...
You mean, what would it cost to retain the architects and construction manager to...
Just to get the, I mean, we have the estimates.
Yeah.
The architect plans are just going to be an additional X amount of dollars times the hourly rate?
Sure. So I have a total that includes architect and FSNE, and I haven't separated those out. But just construction manager costs alone for the $6 million facility will be a little under $100,000. So the architect is probably going to be about one and a half times that. So we're looking at probably at least a couple hundred thousand dollars.
Well, yes, maybe it would be just based on that for a four-story, maybe.
I mean, you're looking at a quarter million dollars and you answer your question, then you, I mean, again, you, you're not going to go forward if you don't have a business case. If you have a business case, you at least, you're preempting the question. I mean, obviously, there's enough, I was curious enough about it. But, you know, do we want to just wait till we get there and then ask the question? Or do we want to know that question before we get there?
And the ultimate question is, if the visitors' locker room is $6 million, how much would it be to add the two or three stories above that? And I know that's a difficult question for you to answer, but it'd probably be 10 million? I don't know.
It's always less to add up than it is out. And if you're, if you're there, you know, I mean, it's kind of...
Is it cost feasible for us to have?
Possibly. I mean, again, there's a lot, there's a lot of ifs there, but we can answer the question that's here. And then the ifs, we can get to. You know, that's just my opinion. I mean, I'm one of seven.
So if we just stick with a $6 million figure, what is the proposal on how we... So, if we just stick with a six million figure, what is the proposal on how we pay for it?
Oh, well, we have money in our venue maintenance funds and I don't know if we pulled it all over or not. Yeah.
But we have it?
Yes, we do.
You're saying cash, not having to borrow?
Correct. And, and this, again, isn't going to be tomorrow because the facility doesn't have to be done until April of twenty five. Well, really, March of twenty five.
Do we have more than six million dollars?
No.
Never hurts to ask.
Yeah.
This is, I mean, what, what you're asking us to, you know, give a nod on right now is the money's necessary to go secure the folks to do drawings and the folks to manage that portion, or, or to manage the bill.
Right. Well, what we're asking for is provision to move forward with the six million dollar facility, which would include retaining an architect, retaining construction manager services to prepare drawings.
I'm, I'm on board with it. The other thing I'd like to add is to make sure that we are, we're crossing out with the, the larger foundation.
Yeah, yeah. We would certainly rec.
Putting the small foundation in.
Correct. We, we totally agree with that.
I, I agree with that. I guess I'm a little confused and I'm sorry, it's Monday, but what are we asking for? Is it like, I'm not, I'm not approving a six million dollar expenditure tonight.
Right. We're not asking you to do that.
That would be in our budget, right? We would have a capital plan.
Well, I mean, that would have to be a resolution. I mean, we're not.
Right. So, in other, we don't want to show up at a council meeting with an architectural proposal to design a six million dollar building without you guys saying, yes, we understand you have to, we have to add that facility. Take step one, well, it's really probably step three at this point, but take step three, hire an architect to come up with a design. But that's, we just, we know that we need to do that and the clock is ticking. But we need to know that you're on board with that. Now, you may take a different approach and, and that's fine. We just.
I, I don't think we have any choice. I mean, I think we, we've got to at least start moving forward to meet that twenty twenty-five deadline.
Yeah.
All, all we're proving now is really the drawings and the.
And, and you're not even approving anything. You're just saying, staff, go forward and, you know, work on this project in terms of getting an architect, doing construction manager. We bring those contracts to you. And then we begin the process of doing the design, like we did with the library, like we did with Toyota Field, et cetera. And they would prepare those plans and then you would make a decision, do you want to put that building out to bid or not? While that's going on, we can still be having conversations with Ballcore about the layers above, right? And does it make sense? And so at some point, we have to decide, are we paying just for the design of the six million? Or, you know, and we'll talk with the architect about, you know, their proposal may be a phased, a proposal, right? Or an option A, you know, where they do the six million and then if we give them the green light, they're going to do the, the items above. So that you have a total, a cost for building the entire thing and just the architect's cost for just the entire thing versus the six million dollar facility.
I'm okay.
I'm okay.
Excellent.
Okay.
That's what I mean, more of, we need to have that discussion of do we want to do the six or do we want to do more?
Yeah.
And, and what does that entail? I mean, this is kind of like no brainer. We got, I mean, we got to do that.
Yeah, we are up against it. So, the information that you guys requested, other Alabama teams, what are they doing? Will the Angels participate?
Teams in their league, like the, the, uh, Southern League.
Southern League. Uh, will the Angels help out? And Karen, getting back with you, will pull the most recent audit and just make sure that all that information that you've requested is there?
Yeah, over the last three, four years, as, as long as it's been, it's been there. We've been spending money where has the funds been coming from? Off of their contract, the cost of the contract.
Okay.
So, just to show that it actually has been coming in from the sources that, that it was required to. And if not, then, then where were the money coming from to?
Okay.
Also, just, just a clarification. If this isn't done, then Ballcore just all goes away and we lose it? Is that, is that really the ultimate here?
If this doesn't occur, then the facility is deemed to be noncompliant by Major League Baseball. And the Angels have the right to pull out and not sponsor, as does any Major League team. Doesn't have to agree to, so then you lose the team, basically. And Ballcore, I believe it's Ballcore and not the city, is fined two hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year for every year that they're not compliant. So, we're good. We'll work on architect, construction manager. We'll be back. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mary Beth. Thank you for the information and the follow-up. Um, we, next, we're at miscellaneous. I had asked the mayor to give us some type of timeline on budget because this, all of this discussion is definitely going to impact what we have left for capital projects.
Sure. So, we feel pretty good about giving budget to finance committee by the end of the week. So, we're space problem, I said problem, space issues that we're working on, some of the bigger projects that we would have in or not in the budget. So, we feel pretty good about having it to the finance committee by the end of the week.
Okay. So, then you think we're going to be able to pass the budget in September?
I think it'll depend on, I mean, what finance committee pushes, you know, I said pushes back, wants to come up with. But I would say by the end of September, absolutely.
Okay. So, then we would need, we were originally going to do a work session last week to talk about the budget, but now we've moved it to the finance committee to do a bigger meeting here and to let the council participate in the budget discussion. So, I think if in September, maybe by the second week in September after Labor Day, if y'all could kind of hold the council, see what dates everybody could be here to get to see, after y'all have had a chance to.
Is that the week of the eleventh, then you're thinking, like the thirteenth?
I'm thinking that's when, in order to get this passed in September, because we meet on the eleventh and then we meet again on the twenty-fifth. So, we would need to have some type of finance meeting after the eleventh.
So, we could do it on the twentieth instead of the thirteenth.
Or that week.
For the thirteenth to give more time should we need to kick in?
I'm about to tell them twelve, thirteen, and fourteenth.
Twelve, thirteen, fourteen.
Huh. I am as well.
And I think we were looking at, mm, twelve, thirteen, fourteen.
We're going nineteenth?
If you do it on the nineteenth, you've got, that's a, less than a week before the twenty-fifth, if you think you've got it in a good, in good shape.
What about the eleventh before the meeting?
I don't think that, I don't think you'll have enough time to, the finance committee kind of go through it at the level you guys.
You got HR committee meeting before then also.
Yeah. So, we're looking at the week of the eighteenth, somewhere to get a finance meeting.
Are we out the week of the eleventh? Is that, like, is the thirteenth bad for people?
Apparently twelve and, twelve through fourteenth, our finance chair's out. So, we've got a.
The fifteenth?
I think.
Yeah, I'm out.
Okay. So, now we're looking.
I think it's eighteenth or nineteenth.
Okay.
Eighteenth to have Madison utilities.
I'm guessing nineteenth.
Work it around that.
Do the nineteenth?
Do the nineteenth.
We're going to, we're going to meet beforehand.
Y'all will, finance. So, then the nineteenth, we're looking tentatively at the nineteenth to do, um, a work session with council going over the budget. Is that what you're thinking?
I mean, honestly, if the finance committee's been through it once, they don't know that the entire finance committee has to do it.
Okay.
I mean, because at that point, you know, it's, we've gone through it. Now you're presenting it to the rest of the council to answer any questions or whatever.
We do it at four.
Four would be great. I have something on the nineteenth that's.
What?
Huh?
I have something on the nineteenth at six that I've committed for. Four o'clock would be fabulous.
Yeah, that'd be good.
We read you've got a fucking game at six, so I'd love to be.
Four o'clock on the nineteenth.
Four o'clock on the nineteenth. Okay. Then we'll get a preview of the budget, budgeting and kind of get to look at it. Okay. All right. Then the, Greg, I think you had a topic. I'm going to move over to council and let y'all bring up some topics you want to talk about.
I would think, because we had talked several months ago about the public comment, we were going to change and we were going to look at it, see if everybody still wanted to keep going that way. And I guess I just wanted to bring up, like, we want to leave it like it is. Y'all want to move it. You want to go back to the way it was before, or it was in the front. Y'all want to leave it like it is. Now, we said we're going to re, re, reevaluate it. I just, I never, you never talk about it. So, I'm just going to bring that up and kind of open it up, see everybody's thoughts.
I would like to go back to the way it is, was before. I mean, that would kind of be my preference at this time.
So, can I ask you why?
Well, I, I don't know.
And I, I'm just asking just for what's the rationale. I mean, it, it don't make a difference. I mean, yeah.
I mean, I guess honestly, it's just kind of a personal preference. Just, I mean, I don't have an answer right now. I'm at a real low cognitive day right now. So, all I can just really honestly say, just a personal, it felt like it, it's been discombobulated the way we, like disjointed the way we've been doing it.
Yeah.
It seems like it flowed a little bit better the way before.
Okay. That's actually pretty cognitive.
I'm sorry?
I said that was actually pretty cognitive. That was pretty good.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Better than decent, though. On a normal day.
Been a rough day, absolutely.
What do y'all think? Are y'all okay with moving it back the way we had it originally?
I, I'm fine with either way. I mean, you know, it's just, you, you can give public, what is it, four, three minutes to speak? What would we have before?
Well, I think, well, what I think is not necessarily changing now. I think it's changing whether you, I think, it's changing the order in which things are done. Is it now moving all that together or is it moving it together and increasing it?
Before we, that, everybody had three minutes to speak beforehand, right?
Yep.
That's correct.
Right. Now, you got three minutes to speak beforehand on anything that's in the agenda.
Yeah, and then.
And then three minutes to speak on anything that's not in the agenda. So, you know, do, do you want to give?
Yeah, I got it.
Another comment, three minutes or six minutes?
I think the other thing was the worry of, you know, council and the, the department heads, you know, what was happening there. And in talking with the department heads, I mean, well, I think they're fine with the way it was. You know, with the major issues that we had, where there's a lot of people that came, they were listening to what happened. A lot of times they needed to hear that. You know, the situation now, they're, they're kind of still here anyway. So, three minutes, that, that worked fine. If you had something to say, come say it. Part of what, what I hear.
I like it at the beginning, but if you do have something special, then let them still have their second three minutes for the agenda items. Just have it up the front.
So, if we're going to move it to, back to the front, would it be, sorry, procedurally, do we repeal the current ordinance and then?
What we have is, in the code, we actually have the, the order as to, you know, what you have to call in the order from your first call to order, moving all the way down. And then we reorder those by the ordinance. So, you can just simply come in and say, we're going to repeal the ordinance and that would bring you back to what we had on the books before we amended it. But you'll also remember that, uh, there's also requests that we include another section of that where we would also include that there be a board committee appointments was also in there. So, basically, if you were to just simply repeal, which y'all passed on June twenty-sixth, it would just revert back to what we had and have been, been operating under for, for, you know, the last several years. But they would not have that board and, uh, committee appointments. It was something we inserted in.
So, would you do a first, would you have to do a first reading to repeal or do you just repeal?
I think we might be able to go ahead and do it without.
Okay. You'll tell us by the next agenda.
I will.
So, we don't, we're not doing this tonight, but if indeed that's the consensus at hearing, you're going to.
I can tell you precisely what we'll need to do.
Tell us procedurally what needs to happen.
Yes. But, but I think a clean repeal would, would get you just, just one ordinance. And if you wanted to, uh, suspend the rules, you could do that as well, if you want to do, uh, in one meeting in one slogan.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Um, all right. Also on my list, John, you had something you want to talk about, a fence?
I, I just, I talked some with.
You already got it?
A and M on the way in. Uh, I wanted to just ask the council to consider a fence around the cemetery over here as part of the subdivision or housing that's going in, uh, to border and divide that cemetery, um, that is commensurate with what's there. Commensurate to, to make that look appealing. I don't know what all that would be, but is that a possibility? We got to get numbers on it first anyway.
That was included in the agreement.
I think they're supposed to do that.
We, we discussed that at the cemetery?
Are we?
I think they're supposed to. That's in their agreement.
It isn't? Okay.
I think, I think after everything's done, they, they.
They will do. Okay. All right.
Now, you know, if, I'm just throwing an example out there, and they're not going to do it, but say they're putting in a chain link fence, you know, we, naturally, that's not something we want. So, maybe we have to pay five thousand dollars to make it look.
Right, commission.
I think Mary Beth can address this because this is something we've talked about at a couple of cemetery committee meetings. And the builder's current or developer's current plan is to put in a wooden privacy fence. We had wanted as a cemetery committee, the iron fence all the way around. And not to put you on the spot, but I think Mary Beth has some information or some history on that, um, sorry, on that development. Just because you were at the meeting and you can speak to it also. So, right now, it's on three sides. It's the iron gate fence.
Right.
Or iron rot fence. Can we put an iron rot fence along the back there?
Is that the area that you're talking about, Mr. Seaver?
I believe so, but I can get the.
He's talking about what's up against them. I'm talking about what's up against adjoining property.
Okay. So, we, the developer was required to install a like fence and they were able to find the same, um, style of fence that was at the cemetery on the, um, western side of the cemetery, eastern side of the development, and that's already been installed. And that, um, effectively metal fence, um, goes up the, um, western side of the cemetery and then goes around on the north corner. They got approval to also install, as Mauro's indicating, the wood privacy fence for the homes that back there. Which we could understand from the resident's perspective of wanting some privacy. We've had inquiries about putting the metal fence across, right, because some people think that would look better than the wood fence. What we've indicated as staff is that once that part of the development is complete, we were going to look to try and reinstall some landscaping to screen the wood fence. There are utilities that were installed underground, which is why all of the vegetation did get removed. And so we need to make sure that we're putting in plant material that would be, would work with utilities underground. So, our first line is going to be to screen the wood fence. And then if there's room there, we could possibly look at putting in metal fence as well. But we really need to wait until we figure out the landscaping piece first. Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks. Okay. Anyone else have any thoughts under this leaves?
I have a couple of things I wanted to bring up. Um, just because I think that it needs to stay on our radar is, and I've been getting several emails lately about a swimming pool and the desire for a swimming pool in our community. The neighborhood repaving project, um, I know Paul and I, and we had talked at a previous, um, work session about making, increasing that amount for next year's budget so that we could, um, accelerate some of those neighborhood repaving projects. And then the last thing I have is I've been getting complaints about, from people that are, like, we had the one gentleman that came to the meeting who was in Nature's Trail Phase Three and he thought he lived in the city of Madison. And after he bought his house, he found out he did not and his kids could not go to Madison City Schools. Apparently, Nature's Trail is advertising that Phase Three, according to this, their HOA. They, they're advertising that Phase Three is in the city of Madison and it is not. Is there anything we can do as a city to discourage people, developers and business owners who are not actually within the city limits and merely have a Madison mailing address from advertising that they are Madison? I don't know. I'm asking. Can we do that?
That, that's been an issue for many, many, many years.
What is happening?
Every street festival I've ever been to, there's four or five people that come up and say the same thing. So.
Well, more and more families are apparently being duped into purchasing homes that are not within the. that are not within the city limits, thinking they are doing what they feel like is best for their, their children, and getting them into Madison City Schools, and they are not doing that.
I would be happy to send a letter to, you know, whomever you can identify and tell them that we find that that's mis, uh, misrepresentation.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, and, and, and just simply see where that goes. But any sort of misrepresentations like that have, uh, all kinds of implications, you know, as far as people being, being fraudently induced to move in there, and creates, you know, civil liability between them and those people. So I would think that should be enough for them to stop doing that. But I'd be happy to send something on behalf of the city to tell them to, you know, avoid their displeasure with it.
Now, there's some also big diligence there, too. You can, I know the, the city, I mean, the, the school system has, has maps, and you can, you can call up and ask. I mean, we had to do that, and.
I, I know that they, they've had that since Renee and I were on school. But the thing is, is that if you're advertising for your subdivision that you're a Madison City Schools, you could need to be Madison City Schools. You don't need to be getting people in here, and if, if a letter from Brian would be enough to straighten this stuff out, then I'm happy to forward you the information that I've got.
It wouldn't hurt, uh, and I would have to take a look to see what sort of actual li, legal remedies we might possibly have. But I would hope that being, you know, basically calling them on it, uh, I would hope would be a long, a big step toward making them stop. But I'd be very happy to research that and make sure that it's.
We can, we can also let the liaison from the Realtors Association know exactly what's happening, and we can get that information to them, too.
I mean, it's hard for us to know exactly where the line is every day, because it changes. But if you were intentionally no, I mean, these, this developer specifically didn't, did not annex the next phase of this subdivision into the city.
If we sent them a letter and made it crystal clear to them that this or that, or whomever you can identify that's doing this, is not within the city, then they can no longer claim ignorance, uh, to it if someone else came along and were to, were to sue them. So I think that, uh, notification from the city would go a long way toward hopefully ending that practice.
All right. I'll forward that to you, Brian. Thank you. That's all I have. Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else?
I just have the one item that, um, you and I have talked about, and that is the current condition of the animal shelter outside. Because the developer took down the tree line, uh, that took away the shade, and so now the animals are sitting on a hot cement pad, um, pretty much in their own feces and urine, um, on that, in that shelter. And, um, I would just like to say that I would like to look, and, and I reached out to Steve in the mayor's office, and he had said that maybe next year, this would be something that we could consider. And so that's something that I'm gonna be looking forward to in the budget. And then it also has become to my attention that Marf is no longer taking dogs. I don't know if it's just big dogs, or small dogs, or if it's all dogs, and we've had to euthanize. And so, um, that just breaks my heart, uh, that it's a healthy dog. So that's something that I would like to ask that we take a look at. I remember council member Spears said a couple of months ago, with the Marf appropriation, um, could the mayor's office take a look at compensating other rescues, uh, that would be able to support us and help us out, and, um, get those dogs home, because they might have a greater, uh, spread of communication? So those were just a couple of items that I had that, um, I would like to add to what we just talked about.
Okay. Thank you.
I think that was a temporary thing.
Which was?
The, the Marf cannot take the animals because of that they had, that vet had issues, so therefore couldn't take the animals.
Well, they use multiple vets. They use governor's choice, and they use, um.
Vets, and one of them, I, I think one of them's, Steve, you probably know a little bit more about it than I do.
Well, and isn't it that they don't have foster families to take the animals as well?
They gotta be vetted before they can take a fo.
Kinda goes what I said earlier. So Marf did, was using two vets, one retired. So that, they just have one right now. They're looking for a replacement for the one that retired.
Who retires with that, Dr.? Who retired? Dr. Whitworth, or?
Uh, what, anyone?
Okay, just curious.
Tommy, but I don't know all of that. I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Uh, but then, uh, so when I found out that they weren't taking the animals that we have now, that's when I called Nikki and talked with her. And she told me about the, her current vet's got that parvovirus, whatever's going on, so he can't take them for two more weeks. So that's why we reached, reached out to Whitworth, that, so they can, then take them and put them out.
Okay.
If you are correct, Marf right now does not have any, uh.
Fosters?
Fosters, that's it. So, but they are working on trying to find some fosters, but they just have not had, for multiple reasons, not had any luck getting fosters.
And hopefully, there could be a line item in the budget should another rescue take it. We can at least compensate them.
But can they foster the, can they, they can't foster the dogs till they've been vetted, right?
Correct.
That's the, all the.
Mm-hmm. Maybe we can find another vet.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. So no further miscellaneous comments. We're gonna take a recess, uh, or we're gonna adjourn the work session, and we'll be back for a city council meeting at six. Thank you all.